We're gonna get started, thank you Seena.
Just make sure Kojiko is ready? Good. Thank you. Welcome to the July 12th council meeting for the City of Cornwall. I'm Eric Bergeron, acting mayor, for the next few minutes. We'll start with a moment of personal reflection. Thank you. We will now ask councillor Sid Gardner to sing the National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. Car ton bras s'apportait les pays, ils s'apportait la croix. Ton histoire est une époque de les plus brillants exploits. God keeper land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you councillor Gardner, much better than a YouTube video. We acknowledge that we are gathering on a traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Aqusasne. We'll now move to the declaration and oath of office of our new mayor.
I, Glenn J. Grant, having been appointed to the office of the mayor in the City of Cornwall, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and partially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Ministerable Conflict of Interest Act. Excuse me. I will faithfully, I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. Declared before me at the City of Cornwall in the province of Ontario this 12th day of July 2021. I had about 10 pages, but I didn't think you'd appreciate that, so I just have a few thank yous. First of all, I want to thank the people of this city that elected me, because if they didn't elect me with councillor, I wouldn't be doing what I'm doing right now. So I wanted to thank them and really appreciate their support over the years. I also want to thank my fellow council members that had the faith in to elect me to this position, or should select me to this position, I guess it would be called. It's, I hope in the next little while to demonstrate that you've made the right choice. And so I'm looking forward to working with you. And you know, to get elected to council, you have to get known in our community. And you do that by volunteering. And by volunteering in our community, it takes away a lot of time, home time, as I call it. So you need the support of a good, excuse me, a strong person. That's my wife, she's my strength, so thank you Sylvia. And also want to thank Bernadette. She's demonstrated the leadership qualities that I hope to follow. So she's been a mentor. I've had mentors over the years. Every mayor gives you something strong to think about and some strengths together. I remember when I was thinking of running, there was a former mayor, Nick Keneb, that after my first term on council said, Glenn, I want you to run for mayor. So I had a meeting with Bob Kilgar and Bob said, Glenn, I'm thinking of running for mayor. I said, then that changed my mind because I knew Bob is going to be a great mayor, and he was. And then I was thinking less, term to run for mayor, and then Bernadette said she was going to run after a meeting, and I said, I'll never beat her. Nobody's going to beat Bernadette in this city. And sure enough, she won by a landslide. But you know, I'm looking forward to working with council and administration. We've got a great administration. And anybody who thinks otherwise has to be near them for a short period of time and find out how great they are. And they've helped me along the ways over the years, and I still look forward to working with them every day. So I want to thank you all, and I hope that I prove to be a good leader and a good mayor. And I hope that if there's any questions of any concerns about things that I talk about, don't hesitate to approach me and we'll talk them out. That's what Bob Kilgar and Bernadette did. And I tried to imitate their effort. So thank you very much, and I hope we have a good meeting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think to start to move forward in the process, we have two special guests tonight that will provide you with the chain of office. We have Daryl Adams joining us and Bernadette Clemente to hand over the gavel. So I will call them up now to present you with that.
You won't need to use it.
No.
Mayor Grant. Our mutual respect is based on the fact that we both love Cornwall very deeply. And so we always had lots in common. I think that when you govern from a place of love, when you start with love, you're generally heading in the right direction. I've been thinking about the Olympics last couple of weeks and a passing of the torch. This feels a little bit like that. It's not a sprint, though. Municipal government is about the long haul, the long term. And I'm not going to offer any advice, you don't need my advice. I am going to offer you this, though. If there's anything you need, there's any commitment or support that you would find helpful in any endeavor for the city, then I offer that to you at any and all times. I want to thank Mr. Bujeli for being here on behalf of the federal government. It's important to see you honor municipal government in this way. And I want to congratulate Grand Chief Abram Benedict. Congratulate you, the new council. And I know that this council and this community is looking forward to deep partnerships with your community, because we're going to do good things that benefit both our communities and that show the rest of this country exactly what can happen here when people collaborate. So thank you. Mayor Grant, congratulations. The city's in good hands. I know that to be true. Merci beaucoup.
I was supposed to speak a couple words. And I'm just really happy for you Glenn, Mary Glenn. You've been around, you know what it's all about, and I think we've left... It's sad to see Bernadette go, but it's, we know we are in good hands with Mayor Grant. So congratulations.
Mayor Grant, we have some distinguished guests here this evening. I would like to, I think they've already been introduced briefly, but I would like to mention that the Grand Chief Abram Benedict is joining us here this evening and certainly would congratulate you on your recent success in your election, echo the words of our mayor, but also would like to give you an opportunity if you would like to say a few words.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much, and first off, congratulations Glenn for this evening. And I'm honored to be here to share in the swearing in of the mayor once again. It seems like it hasn't been that long, about three years ago, that I was here for Bernadette herself, which is a momentous moment. I'm here on behalf of my community to bring congratulations to you and echo what the former mayor has said already about the relationship that we have built upon. Bernadette, in her tenure as the mayor, has established a relationship with our community that's extremely important to me. And the relationship that we have with all levels of government is extremely important to myself and my council and us as neighbors, as between the community of Aqusasne and the City of Cornwall. The relationship that we have established and the foundation that we have put together is important to us. And I believe that going forward, you know, we'll continue to build upon that. In fact, today I was on the radio talking about the great joint project that we have for the City of Cornwall in Aqusasne, and that's the harbor, the portlands, and talking about the importance of that and the community engagement so that we can together bring more opportunity to both of our communities, whether it be in an economic sense or a cultural or tourism sense. As we share a beautiful piece of property there, I believe that there's lots of opportunity there. I do want to acknowledge the city as a whole and as well as the former acting mayor for the recent proclamation for the residential schools and the horrendous news of the unmarked graves that have been discovered. And I'm pleased to see that the city has acknowledged that and is now flying a yellow flag in recognition of that in the city, which is important to my people. As we move forward, we'll continue to look at ways how we can advance our advanced priorities. There is an issue that, you know, is coming more to light in both of our communities, and that's homelessness. And we are, you know, working very hard to ensure that our members who are homeless have an opportunity, have homes and have an opportunity to get jobs. Off-reserve members are important to me in my community. We have a number of people that live in the City of Cornwall, and we want to continue to ensure that they feel part of our community, but also feel part of the city. So we are forging ahead with a number of initiatives to help serve our community members in the City of Cornwall. And we look forward to continuing to work with the City of Cornwall to serve our members as well. We have an exciting initiative that at the same time is exciting, but also is concerning that we have to look at the homelessness. But we're hoping that in the very near future, we will have a service provided to all homeless people, regardless of being from Aqusasne or not. Because that's, you know, that is what we do as elected leadership, is trying to find ways to find solutions for some of the very challenging situations that we have in both of our communities. And I think that, you know, from the framework that the former mayor has established, I'm confident that we'll continue to forge forward to find solutions and make our communities a better place for all of our people. So on behalf of myself and my community, congratulations, and we look forward to the next year and a half of some good work, and then hopefully even past that, as we continue to build a foundation of respect, trust, and mutual understanding to advance our common goal. So Yawagawa.
We also have this evening, our MP Eric Duncan was unfortunately not able to join us this evening. I think he was disappointed. But we have Mr. Adrian Bujeli that's here on his behalf to say a few words.
Good evening, your worship. I don't know if I can get used to that, but we're gonna have to. Eric actually would have loved to have been here tonight, but I know yourself, you like to keep a tight schedule, stick to an agenda, stick to a meeting. So in that sense, you actually lucked out that unfortunately he's out language training, because we'll move through this a lot quicker than if Eric was here giving remarks. But all kidding aside, I know you've had a very good relationship with Eric through volunteerism, as you mentioned before, and giving back to the community. It's very clear, the love that you have for Cornwall, and it's something that you share with your Member of Parliament. I'm here to let you know that our office is always there for the disposal of yourself, the rest of the council, and all city staff. Anything that we can do to move forward our mutual goals to see the community grow, we're happy to do so. I just wanted to offer my congratulations, wish you all the best over the next 15 months with work to do. Congratulations.
Thank you. And we also have our MPP, Mr. Jim McDonnell, joining us this evening from our provincial government.
Mr. Mayor, I also would like to pass on greetings and congratulations from the warden, Alan Armstrong, from SGG. They, he had meetings that were, I think, taking him right up to late afternoon or early evening. So unfortunately, he wasn't able to join us, but I think he's looking forward to working with you. And he said to extend his congratulations.
Thank you very much for the kind comments. And something that I was going to, is part of what I was going to talk about, but I had to get my emotions under control first. And my sister and her husband are here, as well as my wife Sylvia and my daughter Tessa. And it's always great to see family. But today, it's unique that July 12th is... I wore this McDonald, Clan Rattle McDonald plaid, because it would have been my mom's birthday today. So that's, and so I wore that to commemorate her birthday. And it was unique that it was on July 12th. So it's, again, thank you very much for coming and kind words. And I look forward to working with all the levels of government. And Abram, you can rest assured that Bernadette trained as well, and that I'll be working as hard as she did on that file. So, and to all the rest of this council. Our council is, we got our strat planned, and that's pushing us in that direction. And so it's great that you're here, and I really appreciate it. So thank you. Now I think we're going to take a 10-minute break just to get organized, okay? Thank you. Eric. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Glenn Grant.
Present.
Councillors Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Elaine McDonald.
Present.
Sid Gardner.
Here.
Dean Hollingsworth.
Present.
Councillors Caroline Ebert.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
And Edric Bergeron.
Present.
Councillors Maurice Dupell and Todd Bennett have called in their regrets, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any additions, additions or amendments?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, and that is to move the Communication Item Number One to be dealt with immediately after the presentation on the same subject.
Right, thank you. Could I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillor Gardner, Councillor McIntosh, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Any disclosure of interest in, for tonight's meeting? Harry, none, moving on. Committee of the whole, a motion to go into committee of the whole. Councillor McDonald, Councillor Towndale, all in favor? Pose, Carrie, thank you. Adoption of the minutes for Thursday, June 23rd and Monday, June 28th, we can have one motion or separate if you so like, so. Have a motion to move both minutes. Councillor Towndale, Councillor McDonald, all in favor? Pose, Carrie.
We have one presentation in two parts this evening. We have one from Tracy Bailey, General Manager, Financial Services, and Jamie Pollack. I'm not sure who's going first, is it you, Ms. Bailey?
Go ahead.
Perhaps, Mr. Mayor, if I could just introduce the subject matter this evening. So with us this evening, we have Mr. Jamie Pollack and Mr. Sam Toka from NMP, our auditors. We also have Mrs. Tracy Bailey, our General Manager of Financial Services and Treasurer, to do a brief presentation, and then our auditors will follow with our financial statements, and we will certainly be available for any questions from council. So with that, I think I'll hand it over to Mrs. Bailey.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. This evening, I will be presenting a brief overview of the 2020 year-end. Following my presentation, like Ms. Adams indicated, our city auditors, Mr. Jamie Pollack, Mr. Sam Toka, will present the 2020 financial statements. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Scrimshaw, the city's Deputy Treasurer, Mr. Pollack, and their teams for the work that they did this year, for the processes and systems that they put in place so that the audit could be completed and presented this evening. As, as everyone is aware, in March 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 global pandemic. To help stop the spread of COVID-19, the province of Ontario declared a state of emergency on March 17th, 2020. The United Counties of SDG, the Counties of Prescott Russell, the City of Cornwall, declared a state of emergency on March 26th, 2020, and remained in a state of emergency throughout the year. That has had an impact on our financial statements, and that, and you'll hear about that this evening. In response to the pandemic, the city implemented operational changes and concentrated its efforts to provide services within public health orders and guidelines safely to Cornwall residents. The city utilized about $8.2 million it received from the province to support departments that experienced a loss in revenue or related increases in expenditures, including, for the most part, recreation services, parking, transit, paramedic services, Glenstird and Lodge, and in tourism. Some of the efforts the city provided to support the community was by deferring property tax and water, wastewater payments, interest and penalties. The city also utilized $537,500 from the Roundfields Reserve to fund the Small Business Emergency Support Loan Program, and continues to work with businesses for expansion of patios through encroachment applications. The overall future financial impact of the pandemic continues to be unknown at this time, and therefore, there is a note in the city's financial statement that reflects this uncertainty. Our first slide is a description of the city's surplus for 2020. Administration provided council with the 2020 preliminary year-end results at its meeting of May 10th, 2021. At this meeting, council approved the allocation of the city's 2020 surplus. In summary, the city's general surplus from taxation, from the taxation budget was just over $313,000, of which $48,427 was contributed to the working reserve, and a savings of $265,000 realized through the operations at the Cornwall Public Library was contributed to the municipal Buildings Reserve. Water and wastewater departments had a surplus of $542,029, of which $313,396 was transferred to the Waterworks Reserve, and $228,633 was transferred to the Wastewater Works Reserve. Other transfers, at the end of the year, Cornwall and Area Housing Corporation really realized a savings of just over $1 million. This amount was transferred to the Cornwall and Area Housing Corporation Operating Reserve Fund. In 2020, the city budgeted $1 million for supplementary taxation and recorded $950,000, so it's just a little shy of a budget, but because of that, there was no contribution This is our, a summary of our consolidated statement of financial position. The financial and non-financial assets, basically, that's what a municipality owns or controls. Our liabilities, that you see on our, our chart, is what the municipality owes, and the community, accumulated surplus, sorry, that remains after the assets have been used to meet those liabilities. The accumulated surplus is an indicator of the corporation's overall financial health. The city's accumulated surplus at December 31st, 2020 was $397,457, $803. From 2019 to 2020, the city's accumulated surplus increased by approximately $18.9 million. The reasons for the increase in the city's accumulated surplus is, is related to timing, and Mr. Pollack will, will talk a little bit about that. We had a net increase in the city's cash balance or reserve, a decrease in our long-term investments because we placed money into our bank account, and an increase of, in our trades accounts payable, so those monies didn't have an outflow yet to, for payments to be made. The city also realized an increase in its tangible capital assets. Another required statement of the municipal financial statements is the consolidated statement of financial activities. This statement reports on revenues and expenses and the results for the fiscal year. The pie chart illustrates revenue by source, and you'll see that most of the city's revenue does come from taxation, 37.3%, grants and transfers at 34%, fees and services at 22%, and other municipalities at 4%. The chart below the pie chart compares the 2020 year-end to the 2019 year-end. Taxation not only reports tax dollars collected, but is netted with tax refunds. In 2020, the city collected 2.1 million more in taxation than in 2019, and refunded 3 million less in tax refunds. The city recorded $4.4 million more in grant funding in 2020 when compared to, when compared to 2019. This includes the 8.2 million in COVID funding, including 3.6 millions through the Social Services Relief Fund, 2.6 million in Safe Restart programming, and Paramedic Services in Glenstird and Lodge received 1.8 million to support wages and increased expenditures for PPE. Tourism received $175,000 to support our local tourism initiatives. The city also received an increase of $559,000 in base funding for paramedic services and $423,000 in social housing. Social and housing services recorded a decrease in grant funding of 4.7 million for childcare and Ontario Works, and the city received about $237,000 less in POA revenue than it did in 2019. The city recorded a decrease of about 2.4 million in fees and services when compared to 2019. Increases in revenues stemmed from water and wastewater billings and recoveries for COVID-19 clinics, but a reduction in program revenue that we've spoke about before for recreation services, transit fees, tipping fees, mat revenue, and parking revenue, and from a recovery the city received in 2019 related to the power outage at the Civic Complex. The variance that you see of 2.1 million dollars under other revenue is a decrease in investment income, about 526,000, and licenses and permits of 749,000. This slide provides variances for expenditures by service when comparing 2020 with 2019. Social and family services makes up the largest area of expenditures for the city. The decrease in revenue for Ontario Works and childcare noted on the previous slide correlates or is offset by a decrease in expenditures in this area. This is an offset, this is offset by an increase in expenditures for social housing in Glenstird and Lodge. The decrease that you see in environmental services is the change to the city's landfill closure, post-closure liability. Council may recall that in 2019, the city recorded its future liability in the amount of 14.8 million. In 2020, the city recorded the change in this liability in the amount of 1.3 million dollars. City saw an increase in its contracts for curbside collection recycling in the amount of $445,000. The change in expenditures for recreation and cultural services is related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Most of these savings stem from, or related to salaries. In 2020, the city set up a calendar under general government to track COVID-19 pandemic-related revenues and expenditures. These expenses totaled $2.8 million. The city also transferred 1.8 million to the Development Charges Reserve for DC exemptions, both legislated and municipally approved, and there is a requirement for this reserve to be topped up so that the reserve holds the necessary funds for capital projects outlined in our Development Charges study. City reserves and reserve funds are established to assist with our long-term financial planning. Contributions to and appropriations from reserves are approved by council either through the budget process or by a separate report to council providing authorization. In 2014, the city updated its reserve and reserve fund policy. There are four categories. Operating reserves, such as working reserves, the tax stabilization reserve, winter control reserve. These reserves are used to fund items that occur that were not planned or budgeted. Capital reserves, such as equipment and vehicles reserve, the recreation facilities reserve, our municipal buildings reserve, land reserve, and our road infrastructure reserve, are used to accumulate funds over time to replace and maintain capital assets and infrastructure. We have grouping of reserves that are restricted. They would include water, wastewater reserves, our Brownfield Reserve, our Progress Fund. They're only used for specified purposes, of which the reserve was put in place for. And our last category of reserves are restricted reserves that are funded externally. That would be our provincial gas tax funding for transit, federal gas tax, and our Arts and Culture Trust Fund. These reserves that have been funded by senior levels of government or third parties for specific purposes that are defined either by legislation or by municipal bylaw. At December 31st, 2020, the city's reserves included the Progress Fund, including the Progress Fund, were just over $64 million. Through an increase, though an increase overall when compared to 2019, it is important to note where the reserves are held. You'll notice that an increase in operating reserves, based on the charts that are on the screen, we had an increase of about $767,000. In 2018, our operating reserves totaled about 8.6 million. The city had seen a decrease in its operating reserves stemming from the refund of taxes that it was contributing to the tax stabilization for in 2019. Currently, operating reserves are just under 4.5 million. Operating reserves provide municipality with the flexibility it needs. To bring the operating reserves to a target balance, and the target balance is calculated at 10% of the previous year's levy, were about $7.2 million. The city will continue to budget allocations to the working reserve through our budget process. The city's capital reserves continue to increase. In 2018, as you can see from the chart in the center, capital reserves were in a negative balance of about $141,000. In 2019, a positive balance of $507,000, and at December 31st, 2020- And at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, capital reserves had a positive balance of two point seven million. The target balance for capital reserves is calculated at fifty percent of the previous year's amortization costs, excluding water and wastewater. The two thousand and twenty target balance is five million dollars. Through the annual budget process, the city is following its long-term financial plan to contribute to the city's capital reserves. The city's restricted reserves, both municipal and funded externally, saw a net increase of one point one million dollars when compared to two thousand and nineteen. This includes the contribution to Cornwall Area Housing Corporation Reserve for their surplus of one point one million. A contribution to the social housing regeneration, regeneration reserve in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, that's for the build at Marlowe and Ninth, and a reduction to the federal gas tax reserve and the development charge reserve in the amount of one point five million and two point two million respectively. The city also set up a temporary reserve to hold COVID-19, a related funding received from the province. The city received ten point two million in total, utilized eight point two million, and placed one point six million in, in a restricted reserve to use in two thousand and twenty-one. Reserve and reserve funds are an important element of the city's financial plan. By maintaining reserves, the city can accumulate funds for future contingent liabilities, a key component of sound long-term financial planning practices. The reserve and reserve fund policy ensures that annual reporting comes to council and will occur at the same time as the city's financial statements presentation. So in this evening's council agenda, there is the annual report for city reserves. This slide provides an overview of the city's capital fund. Major capital works are not normally completed in the year the budget was approved. Many projects take several years to complete. At the end of each year, administration brings a capital carryforward report to council to ensure that appropriate spending authorities are in place to continue with capital works. The last column on this slide at the left of the chart notes that at the beginning of two thousand and twenty, the city had five million dollars of unspent funds relating to ongoing capital projects. During two thousand and twenty, the city contributed just under twenty-five million to the, I'm sorry, twenty-nine million dollars, that's the next blue highlighted line, to the capital fund, and spent forty-three point seven million. At the end of the year, the, the city had nine point nine million in unfunded capital outlay. What that means is that the city spent more than the revenue that it had, and the reason for this is the city is financing a number of its projects. The Brookdale North Sanitary Sewer Project, our York Street Project, the municipal works yard redevelopment, Fennel Crescent Pumping Station, and those are the major projects. There's, there's others as well, but we'll only borrow the required funds at specific intervals of the project's process or when the project is complete. This slide is a presentation of the city's capital assets at book value. In two thousand and sixteen, the city updated its linear asset management plan to include city-owned buildings and fleet assets. At that time, the city's assets were valued at one point three-three billion dollars, and that had a net book value of four hundred and forty-nine million. The net book value of city assets are sixty percent of the original asset cost. Water and wastewater, infrastructure assets, and municipal facilities continue to be the largest asset categories for the city. As council is aware, on January first, two thousand and eighteen, Ontario Regulation five eighty-eight seventeen asset management planning for municipalities came into effect as part of this legislation. Council did approve the city's strategic asset management policy in, in June of two thousand and nineteen. In March, two thousand and twenty-one, the provincial government amended Oreg five eighty-eight seventeen to adjust the deadlines for asset management. The regulatory timelines associated with the Oreg were amended by one year. So previously, a due date of July first, two thousand and twenty-one is now July first, two thousand and twenty-two. That's the date for municipalities to have an approved asset management plan for core assets, roads, bridges, culverts, water, wastewater, stormwater management systems that identifies current levels of service and the cost of maintaining those service levels. This project was included in the two thousand and twenty budget, and at the council meeting of June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, council awarded the RFP for this work to GM Blue Plan Engineering. We have our kickoff meeting later this week to start that, that project. Following that, it, due by July first, two thousand and twenty-four, we'll take that asset management plan and extend it to include all asset management, assets for the city of Cornwall. And then on July first, two thousand and twenty-five, again, the asset management plans for municipalities will be extended to include proposed levels of service, what activities will be required to meet these proposed levels of service, and strategy to, to fund those Our consolidated schedule of tangible capital assets, this slide presents the balance of the city's tangible capital assets at book value at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty by asset type. The net book value is the original cost of the asset less any accumulated amortization. The first column of the table, the city's assets in service, in the amount of seven hundred and forty-nine million dollars represents the cost to buy, construct, or rehab these assets. The accumulated amortization or depreciation of these assets totaled three hundred and twenty-nine point five million. And at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, the city had twenty-nine point five million in assets under construction or not yet in service for a net book value of just over four hundred and forty-nine million. The assets under construction include our municipal works yard, the HVAC replacement at the Justice Building, Fennel Crescent Pumping Station, Brookdale North Sanitary Sewer Project, and the flare replacement at the landfill site. As noted, the last column of this chart indicates that the overall, that overall the city has approximately sixty percent of useful life remaining for its assets. We do have a bit of a change on the hard copies of your presentation for this slide. It's correct on the overhead. At the bottom of the screen, reserve and reserve funds are seven point seven, and provincial grants are seven point, I'm sorry, four point seven, nine seven. So we just reversed the, the titles on, on that. So if you'd like to make that correction. Long-term liabilities or debt is borrowed money that needs to be paid back with interest at a later date. The city's long-term liabilities at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty was just over forty-four point seven million dollars. This included bank loans at thirty-nine point eight million, Cornwall Area Housing Corporation mortgages at two point nine million, and two million for an internal loan for land in the business park. The city is required to record PSAB liabilities on its financial statements. The city had an estimated sixty-five point one million dollars in future liabilities, which made up, which is made up of about forty-seven million in future employment benefits, eighteen million in landfill closure post-closure costs, and about thirty-four thousand dollars in accrued interest. For the first time, the city is recording future employment benefits, which includes medical sick leave, WSIB, on its financial statements. The city engaged Dixon Actuarial Services to estimate this liability for us. For comparison purposes, the two thousand and nineteen year end was restated. Mr. Pollock will discuss the impact of the financial statements during his presentation. Excluding the PSAB liabilities at the bottom of, of this slide, the city's financial statement notes the sources of future revenues or where funding for these liabilities is to come from. So the forty-four point seven million dollars, thirteen point three million of that will come from general municipal revenue, thirteen point nine million from user fees, water and wastewater, two million from proceeds of selling the land in the business park, seven point eight million from reserves and reserve funds for the Benson Center, the HVAC at the library, and vehicles for paramedic services. Four point eight million from provincial grants, and that includes one point three million to be funded from MMAH for Cornwall Area Housing Corporation mortgages, and one point seven million to fund the transit fleet through the provincial gas tax. To meet the requirements of Regulation four oh three oh two of the Municipal Act, a report related to the current status of the city's municipal debt limits is provided to council annually. The two thousand and twenty annual report on municipal debt limits is included in this This slide provides details specifically on bank loans. Reported on the city's financial statements at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, the city had bank loans that totaled thirty-nine point eight million. This includes bank loans for vehicles and equipment in the amount of seven point eight million, twenty-three point four million in bank loans for municipal facilities, including the wastewater treatment plant, the Benson Center, and paramedic facility. The city also began to borrow for the redevelopment of municipal works yard in two thousand and twenty. The city borrowed for post-employment loans for, loan for the police services, LED light, street lighting, Brookdale Avenue North Channel Bridge, roadways and structures, and the city's flood reduction initiative. In two thousand and twenty, the annual non-consolidated principal repayment for the city was four point eight million, and the annual interest cost was one point one, totaling five point nine million in debt payments. Two point nine million is funded by the tax base and the balance of three million from other revenue sources such as user fees and reserves. In summary, for two thousand and twenty, the city had an operating surplus of three hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven. The surplus was contributed to the working reserve and to the municipal buildings reserve. The city had a surplus in water services of three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-six thousand. The surplus was transferred to the waterworks reserve. We had a surplus in wastewater services, two hundred and twenty-nine, sorry, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. The surplus was transferred to the wastewater works reserve. City has entered into financial agreements for long-term debt for the sum of six point nine million dollars for LeMay Street reconstruction, municipal works yard, municipal works fleet, Emerald Ash Bore, and LED lighting replacement at the civic complex in Benson Center. Our city reserves and reserve funds totaled sixty-four point nine million, and through conversations with the city's auditor and discussions with the audit committee, the city's financial position continues, continues to be strong. Our two thousand and twenty-one initiatives. As you're aware, Financial Services began upgrading the city's accounting system in two thousand and nineteen. We've completed several modules, including the taxation module, utility module for water and wastewater, the accounts receivable module, cashier, payroll, and time card entry modules. We continue to work on the procurement, purchasing module, the accounts payable module, and fixed assets module, and the general ledger module. In ITT Services, we continue to review new technologies for the city. ITT has just completed its first master plan. This master plan will be presented to council at a subsequent council meeting. Over the next couple of years, Financial Services will review and identify new policies relating to capital, debt management, reserves, and investments.
Thank you, Tracy. Are there any questions? Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a quick question. On page twenty-two and twenty-three of our agenda, I guess the presentation would be four and five. Consolidated Statement of Financial Activities and Consolidated Statement of Financial Activities, one is revenue and one is expenditure?
Yes, that is correct.
I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, so perhaps this question may not be a good one, but we're going to give it a try anyway. On the revenue page, do I read this right that from two thousand and twenty to, or two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, we're six point seven million dollars to the good on the revenue side? Am I reading that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When we compare the two thousand and nineteen actuals to two thousand and twenty actuals, the city had an increase in revenue of six point seven million.
Okay. And that being said, on the next page, reading backwards, does that mean that we're twelve million dollars less, we spent twelve million dollars less from actual of two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty?
That is correct.
So does that mean that we have eighteen million dollars of extra money that we didn't technically think we were supposed to have?
It doesn't. A lot of these numbers are not cash related, they're PSAB related.
Pardon me, sorry.
They're related to non-cash items. So Mr. Pollock will talk about the city's accumulated surplus, but yes, there, there's numbers included in here that are not cash related.
What does that mean? Okay, well, I'll wait, I'll wait, Your Worship, then I'll let you go through your-
And I can explain that during my presentation.
During your presentation, maybe that'll expedite things. I'll wait for the second half. Thank you, Your Worship.
Any other questions? Counselor Towne Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Expenditures in regards to curbside collection recycling, so looking at this and understanding your presentation, Ms. Bailey, they're up almost half a million dollars, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, our, we have a contract for curbside collection recycling, and they are, they are up. And, and that was an award that council approved, I believe, about two years ago.
So, thank you.
It is quite a large contract.
So, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Follow-up. So this was a planned increase in the contract, then? This is unrelated to COVID-19?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? We could have a motion to receive the presentation from the CFO. Counselor Hollingsworth, Counselor McDonald, all in favor? Oppose, carry. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Next? Madam Clerk, is that?
I believe Mr. Pollock is next, presenting his financial, the financial statements.
Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Hello, council members, administration. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I'm happy to go through the financial statements. I'm here with Sam Toca from our auditing team from MNP. We're both chartered professional accountants and chartered accountants, and we've been with MNP for a number of years, and we're happy, for me, only three years, but the presiding firm of Craig Keen, despite a mark for almost twenty-one years now. If we go through the financial statements, and if there's any questions or concerns, please stop me, and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions or concerns that you may have. But if we turn to page sixty-four in your package verse, this is our independent auditor's report, and I won't go through much detail with it, but it is addressed to the members of council, the annulments and rate payers of the Corporation of the City of Cornwall, and it has our opinion paragraph, and I'll just read the two paragraphs, and this is what we've been engaged to do. We have audited the consolidated financial statements of the Corporation of the City of Cornwall, the city, which comprised the consolidated statement of financial position as of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, and the consolidated statements financial activities, change in net financial liabilities or assets, and, and cash flows for the year then ended, and the notes to the consolidated financial statements include in the summary our significant accounting policies. In our opinion, the accompanying consolidated financial statements present fairly in all material respects the consolidated financial position of the city as of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, and the results of its consolidated operations and its consolidated cash flows for the year then ended at a quarter. cash flows for the year then ended at accordance with Canadian public sector accounting policies. So it's a clean audit opinion, that's what you want to hear from us as your auditors. It is in draft format right now, but upon approval, hopefully by council tonight, we're in a position to sign our auditor's report, date is today's date, July the twelfth. I know Ms. Bailey went through a lot of the financial numbers, so I'm going to keep a high preview of these financial statements, but I will try to add some insight where I think is appropriate. If we turn to page sixty six in your package, this is your consolidated statement of financial position or your balance sheet. It is at a particular point in time, which is December thirty first, two thousand twenty. If you look on your, your assets, your total assets at December thirty first was just under ninety seven point eight million compared to ninety three point seven million, an increase of four point zero eight million or four percent. As you look at your cash, the cash has increased by eight point four million dollars, but as Ms. Bailey alluded to, this is a timing item, because under assets, if you look under long term investments, the last line under assets is fifty two point two million compared to sixty point four million, which is a decrease of eight point two million dollars. So some investments and restricted cash was converted to your operating cash, ready to pay out some of the liabilities that were incurred for your capital projects from two thousand twenty. The remaining increase is from taxes receivable, accounts receivable, which is mainly grants receivable, and user charges receivable, which is outstanding grant revenue received in two thousand twenty or to be received related to two thousand twenty, plus the deferral of collections of user charges and taxes because of the COVID nineteen pandemic, which was implemented for two thousand twenty. Under liabilities, total liabilities is a hundred and fifty two point six million compared to a hundred and thirty five point one million, an increase of seventeen point five million dollars or thirteen percent. The majority of that increase is under accounts payable, total is thirty seven point one million compared to twenty two point four million, and that is timing based on the, of trade payables that is outstanding, which increased by fourteen point seven million or sixty five percent during the year. This increase in accounts payable actually results, and you will see flow out the financial statements, is why you have an on finance capital outlay of just over nine million dollars at December thirty first, two thousand twenty. Net financial liabilities at the end of the year is fifty four point eight million, an increase of thirteen point four million from the previous year. When you include your non financial assets, your accumulated surplus is three hundred and ninety six point five million or compared to three hundred and seventy seven point five million from the previous year, which is a five percent increase or eighteen point nine five million dollars. The accumulated surplus is just not your operating surplus or your cash to spend, it includes your operating fund surpluses and deficits, your investment in your tangible capital assets, plus your reserves and reserve funds. The accumulated surplus includes tangible capital assets of four hundred and forty nine million dollars, less the long term debt of forty two point seven million dollars. And of course, tangible capital assets are recorded for accounting purposes under PSAS or PSAB, is that your historical cost less accumulated amortization, it's not your replacement value or your fair market value of your buildings or your lands, but what's being incurred and paid for on a historical cost basis under PSAB purposes. If we turn to page sixty seven in your package, this is your consolidated statement of financial activities or your income statement for the year. When we look at your actual totals at the top for revenue, total is one hundred and ninety eight point seven million dollars, but when you compare it to your budget, what you budgeted for was a hundred and ninety eight point three million dollars. So while your revenue compared to the previous year did go up by almost seven million dollars, compared to budget, you were actually decreased or increased by three hundred thousand, two hundred and twenty seven dollars or point one five percent. So with, with all what has happened during the year, with the closures of your recreation centers, the COVID funding coming in and plus some tax write offs, you actually came within your budget amount for revenues by point one five percent. So I think that's excellent that how that has worked out for the city of Cornwall. As you go through some of the key line items, yes, you were below in taxation and payment and lose by two point five million, but you receive additional government grants because of COVID by close to five million dollars. So total sixty seven compared to budget of sixty two, but you were shortfall in other areas such as revenue from other municipalities by three hundred thousand, fees and services was one million dollars, and that's because of the closure of a lot of the recreation centers since March, two thousand twenty, and your investment income was below budget by a million dollars, and that's because of the deferral payment plans that you put in place for your taxes and your user fees receivables that they were deferred, plus unfortunately, the interest rates went down at the same time, so you earned less investment income on your reserve funds in the year. Under expenditures, total expenditures for the year was a hundred and ninety four point five million compared to a hundred and ninety five point two million on the budget column on the right hand side, and it's less than the previous year by twelve, twelve million dollars. When you compare to the budget, you're within budget by point three eight percent, and you're actually were to the good by that amount of seven hundred and forty four thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars. So with what all has happened because of COVID nineteen and one area that your administration can really monitor, which is the costs being absorbed, your administration was able to come within budget by point three eight of one percent. So I, to me, that's great administration and management of your operating costs by administration throughout the year. The reason why you will see a big decrease from the previous year in expenditures of twelve million dollars is under environmental services, and two years ago, there was a study done on how much it was going to cost to close the landfill clo, uh, cost site and what those costs would be in the future closure monitoring costs, and that was going to be thirty eight million dollars at the time when the site is expected to be closed in two thousand thirty two. So based on the usage of that landfill site, we estimated, well, the consultant estimated, which we vouched, was sixteen million dollars at, based on usage at the end of two thousand nineteen. With the change in the estimate, the previous accrual amount was four million dollars, so there had to be an adjustment made for PSAB purposes, a non cash item, but that was recorded as an actual, as an expense in your financial statements resulting in your prior year numbers, which was recorded in your two thousand nineteen financial statements anyways, an increase of twelve million dollars due to the change in the estimate. So currently, the accrued landfill closure and post closure cost with this year's change is now just under eighteen million dollars, expected to be thirty eight million when the closing date occurs in two thousand thirty two. Now, just to throw a wrench in all this, there's going to be an accounting change that has been announced that's going to come in the next couple of years. Instead of showing the seventeen or eighteen million dollars, they will expect us to show the full thirty eight million dollars rate on the face of the balance sheet, you know, in a couple of years and show that thirty eight million to the date that the landfill site is closed. So that is the reason for the big increase in the prior year expenditures. This year, when you compare, compare to budget, you're within point three eight percent. So I think anything with the city of Cornwall below point five percent, I think you've done a great job in managing your costs. When you take in other revenue for capital and other purposes, the total is fourteen eight point eight million for total surplus for the year, and this is, of course, on the financial statements, quite different than what Ms. Bailey has announced, your total surplus for the year is eighteen point nine five million compared to a budget amount of fifteen point five million, and the previous year was a loss of seven point four million Now you might say, why, Mr. Auditor, why such a big difference? And I can answer that if we turn to page sixty eight. This is your statement of changes in net financial liabilities. If you look at the, the middle column, as indicated, your annual surplus on these financial statements is eighteen point nine million dollars. You add back your amortization of your tangible capital assets, which is a non cash item of sixteen point two million, and then you deduct your acquisition of your tangible capital assets. You had an extremely busy year in two thousand twenty and you had forty nine million dollars worth of acquisitions, so that brings you to an increase in your net financial liabilities on these financial statements of thirteen point four million dollars, but as, as indicated, your change in your on finance capital outlay was fifteen million dollars in the year, and that explains the overall change in your net financial liabilities position for the year when you look at on a global basis. So that's the main change in the net financial liabilities. If we turn to page seventy, this is your consolidated schedule of tangible capital assets. Ms. Bailey has already gone through this information, but one thing I'd like to point out, on the right hand side at the bottom, the net book value is four hundred and forty nine million dollars compared to four hundred and sixteen million, seven hundred from the previous year. Two factors we'd like to take a look at that shows how the city is managing its tangible capital assets. One is the percentage of net book value compared to the total assets at cost. It's fifty seven percent, and it's the same as the previous year. Anything over fifty, which indicates that you have more than half of its useful life still being used of those assets in service, and we always appreciate to see that over fifty, that you still have over that much of useful life. The second item we'd like to look at is always the amount of amortization in the year, which is sixteen point two million, which is about four lines up on the, from the bottom compared to its total cost. The total cost for the year in service was twenty eight million plus an additional twenty one million in, in work in process. So we always like to see at least the same amount of additions being put into your tangible capital assets compared to amortization, and of course, this year, that, there was no issue there that you was able to maintain that. The previous year was about the same, twenty four million in costs compared to amortization of fifteen, so it indicates to the users that you are continuously reinvested into your tangible capital assets, which of course includes your lands, your buildings, your water and wastewater and your road networks and vehicles. If you turn to the next page, it's actually, the closing balances are the same in the right, bottom right hand corner, it's just presented by department. Of course, the environmental services and water and wastewater carries the two largest amounts along with your municipal works balance, if you looked at the closing net book value balances of those three departments. Page seventy two is the breakdown of your schedule of accumulated surplus. It's broken down between operating deficits, reserves and reserve funds, and then invested intangible capital assets. If you looked at the capital surplus on finance capital outlay about a quarter down, you'll see it's a deficit of nine point four million compared to a positive number of five point six million. So currently, you had assets that, you currently had money set aside at the start of the year, but you finished the year with capital projects that's not currently financed, so they're called on finance capital outlay. That amount is ninety point four, nine point four million, a swing of fifteen million dollars in the year. If you recall, the change in your statement of net assets was thirteen point four million dollars, and that's explained the change from the net assets with the change in your accumulated surplus is the swing in your on finance capital outlay from one year to the next. Under reserves and reserve funds, total balance is sixty point one million compared to fifty three point six million, an increase of six point five million dollars or twelve percent. Your invested intangible capital assets, the net change is thirty one million dollars or an eight percent increase. The additions were forty nine million dollars, less amortization of sixteen million dollars and a net increase in your debt by two million dollars in the year. So your total accumulated surplus, as previously indicated, is three hundred and ninety six point five million, an overall increase of nineteen million dollars from the previous If we go through the financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, if we turn to page eighty two, part of your reserve funds are actually obligatory reserve funds, and they are presented as deferred revenue on your financial statements and not part of your overall accumulated surplus. The closing balance is four point five million compared to six point seven million the previous year. Out of that four point five million, one point six million is the on spent safe restart COVID nineteen funding that the city received and not yet utilized, which is being carried forward. The gas tax reserve fund is three point eight million dollars, and the development charges reserve fund is, has a deficit going into two thousand twenty one of one point one million dollars. Note ten is the future employment benefits. There is a breakdown from previous year where we had just post employment benefits or, or payments that's upon termination, which included vested sick leave benefits and potential workplace safety insurance board benefits and vacation pay. Now there, we are including the amounts for non pension retirement benefits, which is extended healthcare, dental benefits and life insurance premiums for certain bargaining units that the city has, and that closing balance is thirty, thirty three point four million dollars at the end of two thousand twenty. This is a PSAB item, it's not liabilities that you have to pay today, it's liabilities that you have to fund in, in the future, which the city does on an annual basis with its payments to insurance carriers, but payments that's owing to individuals who are retired, who has provided services to the city, but you owe them these benefits based on the agreements that they had for work in the city. There is a discounted benefits payable to them totaling thirty three point four million dollars for the non pension portion. This does even include OMs. Accumed sick leave benefits, there's this vested portion that gets paid out upon seizement of their employment plus the on use portion, that is now four point two million dollars, and of course, vacation pay and bank overtime is one point six million dollars, they are discounted to today's dollars, and this was done using an actuary report that your administration had consulted, engaged with, and it was provided for the city use, and we are able to obtain that information and put it into the financial statements. Going through the rest of note ten, it kind of shows down how it changes from one to year, one year to the next, and the breakdown by employee group of those non pension benefits, thirty three point four million between the six different, the seven different bargaining units plus non unionized employees. If we turn to page eighty five, we have at the bottom note twelve, the accrued landfill closure and post closure liability. You have sixty eight percent of the landfill site has been used, resulting in thirty two percent of its estimated remaining capacity. Discounting today's dollars, the closure costs for the site based on its current usage is just under eighteen million dollars. The cost to close the site in two thousand thirty two as estimated would be thirty eight million dollars. As you use the landfill site each year, the liability will increase based on that usage until you hit the thirty eight million dollars at the time of closure. Of course, my understanding is administration is putting in the plans to defer the closure date of that landfill site as much as possible through the divergent of, of garbage and disposal waste through recycling programs. If we turn to page eighty nine, this is the notes, note eighteen, the reserve, the breakdown of reserves, and I know Ms. Bailey has gone through most of this already, so your operating reserves is four point five million dollars, an increase of seven hundred and sixty seven thousand from the previous year. from the previous year or twenty percent, and most of that increase is due to your surplus for the year, for your, for operating surplus, which was allocated to the reserve, which was three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Your capital reserves is two point nine million, an increase of two point two million from the previous year or two point nine percent, and the largest increase is in your municipal buildings' capital reserve. Total reserves is twenty-three point four million or a twenty percent increase from the previous year, an overall increase of three point nine million based on those two previous increases as indicated. For the 2021 fiscal year, the committed funds to be transferred from reserves is seven million dollars, and the committed funds to be transferred to reserves are five point eight million. As indicated, this is at a point in time at December thirty-first, 2020. The reserve position could be quite different as of now based on your 2021 activities, and it could be different by December thirty-first, 2021. If we turn to page, to page ninety, this is your reserve funds, which includes your progress fund column on the right-hand side. The minimum balance to maintain is twenty-five million dollars, and at the end of the year is twenty-five point seven million, a net increase of ninety-three thousand dollars based on interest revenue used and allocation of that interest revenue to pay down the debt related to the mentioned center. Total reserves funds is thirty-six point seven million, with the biggest increases under social housing, which went from four point five to six point seven million dollars. If we turn to page ninety-one, note twenty-two, it kind of shows a reconciliation how we get from the eighteen point nine million to the operating surplus of the year of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand four fifty-six. As already indicated, three hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred was for the operating surplus in the year, and five hundred and forty-two thousand and twenty-nine dollars for the waterworks and wastewater works reserve. Out of that eighteen million dollars, as indicated, fifteen million dollars of that was for the swing in, for capital, and that's why, out of that eighteen million, only eight hundred and fifty-five thousand is your operating surplus for operating fund and your water and wastewater programs. If we turn to page ninety-five. The city has provided in the financial statements a five-year financial review, which is unaudited, but they are provided for users' needs. On the bottom, we have total property taxes billed, and you will see it's eighty-eight point seven million dollars. Over the last five years, it's actually a five percent increase when you compare to your 2016. It's an increase of four point four million dollars, where it works out to one percent per year. If you look at, just at the annual surplus deficit from five years, there's only one year that has a deficit, which is 2019, seven point four million. That's due to the change in the landfill closure, post-closure cost estimate, which was an increase of twelve million. If you put that amount in, that seven point four million deficit becomes a seven point five, yeah, becomes a five point five million dollar surplus instead. If we turn to page, to page ninety-six. Your weighted taxable assessment grew from 2016 of four point eight to five point one, it's actually billion, overall increase of five point five percent over those five years or one point one percent. When you take of what was billed and what's your weighted taxable assessment and compare to your municipal residential tax rate, which has been provided, that rate has only grew by point five seven percent over a five-year period when you analyze that. So when, while the municipal residential tax rate has grew by point zero four one percent total, but it's only point five percent overall increase, when you analyze it, your weighted taxable assessment was one point one. So all the taxation revenue increase over the year is being driven more from property assessment and not necessarily the increase in your municipal tax rate. So about two-thirds of the increase in your weighted, in your, increase in your taxation revenue is coming from weighted taxable assessment and not the increase in your tax rate. Financial indicators, there's some key ratios to look at. When you look at your taxor years, you've probably heard that there's some other townships with higher taxor years. Yes, yours have gone up, but on percentage size, it only went up by one percent of your current levy and one percent of your total levy, but at a low rate of five percent and four percent respectively, you're actually in good management of your taxor years, and that's good to see at that such low rates where other municipalities are over ten percent, closer to twenty percent, you're at four percent. So you are collecting your taxes, even with the deferral program, it only went up by one percent in the year. When you look at financial assets to financial liabilities, it remains consistent at point six four. Financial assets to current liabilities, and I'm under the sustainability part, is two point eighteen compared to two point nine from the previous year. This is another way of looking at your working capital by taking your financial assets and just comparing it to your accounts payable and your deferred revenue that you have to utilize. We're excluding your long-term debt, any piece of items, because those are not liabilities that we say that's due today, they're due in the future. It's two point one. Any operating business will love to have a working capital of over two point one, that's the rule of thumb, you're at two point one. The previous year was two point nine, and the year before that was three point seventeen. Only because of your on-finance capital outlay being such in the big balance and your accounts payable at the end of the year is driving that number down, if the liabilities were financed accordingly, probably before the end of the year and not afterwards, and I know it's all time, and you would still remaintain a high working capital ratio. And the last part is your reserve coverage. Reserves to operating expenditures is twelve percent compared to nine point four percent. With the city as your size, we always like to see around ten percent as your guideline. So to be over twelve, I think that's great that you have the reserves and reserve funds in place, and that this one ratio really indicates that the city is in strong financial shape, and that's supported by your working capital ratio and your low taxor years balance at December thirty-first, 2020. The reserves to working capital, only because your working capital decreased that your ratio has gone up, ideally, we'd like to see that to one to one, but once your accounts payable is kind of cleared up with the new debt to come in in 21 to help pay down the on-finance capital outlay, this ratio will kind of adjust itself back to historical numbers that you see from 2019 to 2016. So those are the financial statements. We do include our management recommendation letter, which was addressed with the audit committee, and if there's just one thing that, if I look at your financial statements and really kind of, kind of a first glance without knowing the history, and while we'll, I'll kind of go through the, our one recommendation that we have is regarding your working reserve. We compliment the city for being in a strong financial shape with the amount of reserves and reserve funds held at the end of each fiscal year. However, the working reserve was only two point eight six million as part of the overall operating reserve balance at December thirty-first, 2020. The city has a policy of maintaining a group of operating reserve accounts at ten percent of the previous tax levy, and it's our understanding that administration has a financial position, has a financial plan to replenish this reserve. We recommend that administration expand the reserve and reserve funds policy to stimulate the working reserve balance to be maintained at a predetermined minimum dollar level. This will assist the city to consistently remain in strong financial shape. We have provided administration response, and as part of the history, obviously, the working reserve was used to help finance this large amount of tax write-offs that was incurred for the last couple of years. We understand that was done, and we understand there is a plan to replenish your working reserves. Without knowing the history, you will think the city is below what we would think is a minimum dollar amount, but obviously, there's reasons for that, and the city does have a plan to replenish its working reserve. That is my financial report for, our M&amp;P's report for 2020. I want to appreciate the full cooperation that we received from Ms. Bailey and Ms. Adams and Mr. Scrimshaw and their accounting team to help us meet, to be here tonight to present these draft financial statements to council and to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. It's a good report. Is there any questions at this time? And then we'll look for a motion. Councilor Gardner.
I'd just, I'd like to make a quick comment. Thank you very much for the way you explained this. I spent three days, and I think I had numbers coming out of my ears, and I was trying to figure out where the heck I was for a while. So when you people come to that podium and present the budgets or the draft budget the way you do, I have more of an understanding of what's going on. I'm not an accountant, so sometimes the numbers are, get a little confused. I thank you for making it more simple.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Councilor McIntosh, Councilor Gardner, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thanks again, Jamie. Very well done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilors, and we'll see everyone hopefully soon again.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
So just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, was that a motion to receive the presentation?
No, to approve.
To approve the 2020 financial statements. Moving on to consent items. The first item is a proclamation recommending that council proclaim Saturday, August seventh, 2021, as Eco Day in the City of Cornwall. Cornwall Rib Fest with a recommendation that council recognize the Cornwall Rib Fest from July twenty-second to July twenty-fifth, 2021, as an event of municipal significance.
Motion to approve the consent. Councilor McDonald, Councilor Eber, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
There are no resolutions, so moving on to reports from unfinished business. The first one is the town hall meeting for the electoral system review with a recommendation that council direct administration to move forward with a town hall meeting on Thursday, August twelfth, 2021, at 7:00 P.M.
And CEO, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam, Mr., sorry, Mr. Mayor. That's a little bit of a habit. This report is coming forward to council. It was discussed previously that we would work towards a town hall format to help engage the community, maybe provide a little bit of education with respect to the ward system. And I think that we feel with changes in public health restrictions, we're hoping in August that we should be able to host a town hall in this room. We're proposing that we'd have people pre-register, but we could have participants, ten on each side of the room, and we could set up multiple times for people to come in. The report provides a little bit of background on some information. I'd also like to highlight our public information coordinator put together an excellent video on YouTube. I'm not sure if anybody's had an opportunity to see it, but I think it was very well done. And we have some placards and some information that we've gathered up that we think would be helpful, but we thought this would be a good place to start with council to see if they'd like to host something like this in a town hall meeting. So we have certainly our staff available, and the clerk worked quite diligently on this process and trying to come up with a format. So if anybody has any questions, staff are certainly here to answer those questions.
Before we get a motion, are there any questions for Councilor Hollingsworth?
Just a question, Your Worship, and then I'll talk if there's a motion. Do I get this right, that if we have a town hall meeting on this date, it would be exclusively for the electoral system review? Like, is that how you anticipate? Didn't see it in the report, so you anticipate this, like, would be the theme of the night, and then potentially a subsequent town hall meeting might be something else? Is that how you see it, Madam CEO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, because the item that we had on the unfinished business listing is really to, I think, try to deal with councils deliberations on council size and the ward system as councils, where we need to have a decision or resolution of council prior to the end of this year if we want to have changes in place for the following election. And then depending on, we think that this might be, hopefully, this might be something that will draw people out to participate, and then we'll be able to, I think, try and learn from it for future town hall meetings. But per your comments, we also talked about having a town hall meeting available just on general topics where members of the community can come in and speak to council or address their interests or concerns or presentations to council.
Good. Thank you, Your Worship. I'll speak if there's a motion with your indulgence.
Is there a motion at this time? Councilor Towndale?
I'd like to move the recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McIntosh. Councilor Hollingsworth.
On the motion, Your Worship, I'm not going to support this motion for an electoral review system town hall, even though I support the concept of a town hall. I don't believe in the ward system, and I'm prepared to do whatever it takes to avoid us going to a ward system. I believe it will be divisive. I believe it will undermine the budget process. Don't believe for a second it will be a better deal for the community or the City of Cornwall as a whole, and sort of rearranging the deck chair feel. It's really not going to solve whatever prospective problems our community has. So while I support the town hall concept, I don't want to have a discussion about the ward system, because I know exactly how I feel on it, so I'll vote against it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Towndale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this report stems from a motion I brought to council a number of years ago. I'm in favor of having this discussion. I mean, this is for a town hall right now. We're not debating the ward system. We're not debating the size of council at this moment. We're debating having a town hall meeting, and I think public consultation is always a good thing. We had a round of it previously. There are the results in this report, but I think, you know, the results were very static questions without feedback. I think the town hall will provide feedback that is more constructive, and I look forward to that discussion. I do believe in the ward system, and I do believe in a smaller council, but that's neither here nor there for tonight. But I think that, you know, on the, on the date of this town hall, provided this passes, we should get some interesting comments from the residents of the city, and I think the residents have the right to choose the government that represents them. So, thank you.
Any other comments? So can we, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Next, Madam Clerk.
Is the unfinished business listing for July twelfth. Recommend you that council receive this listing.
Motion. Councilor Hollingsworth, Councilor McDonald, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you.
Moving on to communication items. 2020 annual report on the status of city reserves with a recommendation that council receive this report of financial services on cities' reserves and reserve funds as of December thirty-first, 2020.
Motion. Councilor Gardner. Seconded by Councilor Towndale. Any questions? Councilor Towndale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two technical questions through you. So I was just reading through the reserve reports in terms of expenditures and contributions, and I just had two questions in regards to two items. Noticed a parking machine, for example, was funded from working reserves instead of the parking reserve, and likewise, bus stop accessibility was funded from the vehicle and equipment reserve rather than, say, the gas tax, where I would have expected those to be. So I was just looking for some clarification on that, if I could get it, please. So I was just looking for some clarification on that, if I could get it, please.
Madam CEO?
Through you.
Tracy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I did have a little bit of trouble hearing you, but the reserves are funded through recognized sources, through the budget process or through a council report. So when a recommendation comes, we, we indicate the best source of revenue, what reserve that may be. So if you want to give me the first one again, I could take a look at it specifically, and the second one, and the page number, if you could.
Oh, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the page number in front of me, but for example, the working reserves, we funded something for parking from there as opposed to, say, the parking reserve?
Correct. So if something's funded from the working reserve, most likely, it's because it's to be paid back. So through an operating, through a report, we had suggested to pay for an expense that was not budgeted for, and we'll pay it back in the subsequent budget year.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to follow up on that, the second item, Ms. Bailey, has to do with the accessibility project for the bus stops, and that was funded from vehicle and equipment reserve instead of, say, the gas tax, which normally funds the majority of our transit projects. So I was just curious about that one.
The transit projects, that provincial gas tax funding, it's already utilized for certain operations at transit, and the rest is for our debt charges, for our buses, et cetera, that, that we've purchased. There's not enough funds in that reserve to do anything else, so transit does contribute to the equipment reserve, and therefore, it was funded from, from that reserve.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
2020 annual report on development charges reserve fund. The recommendation is that council receive this report prepared in accordance with Section 12 of Oreg 8298 of the Development Charges Act 1997.
Counselor Towndale, seconded by Counselor McIntosh. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed, Carrie. Thank you.
2020 annual report on municipal debt limits, with a recommendation that council adopt this report as required under the Municipal Act 2001, Ontario Regulation 40302.
Counselor Bergeron, seconded by Counselor Gardner. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed, Carrie. Thank you.
2021 audit with a recommendation that council direct administration to enter into a one-year contract extension with MNP LLP to conduct the 2021 annual audit for the city, its agencies, boards, and commissions.
Counselor McDonald, move in the motion. Seconded by Counselor Gardner. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. One question. I understand the rationale for continuing on this year because we're in the process of transitioning a number of departments with the budgeting process and IT and whatnot, but typically speaking, do we tender our orders annually, biannually? Like, I'm, I'm supportive of what you're asking this year because of where we are with what we need to do, but typically, do we tender, or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, we go out with an RFP, normally for a three-year agreement with an opportunity for two one-year extensions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
There are no new business motions, Mr. Mayor, so moving on to bylaws. Bylaws 2021 79 and 80 inclusive listed on the agenda are being presented to council for adoption.
Motion? Counselor Towndale, Counselor McDonald, all in favor? Opposed, Carrie. Thank you.
And we are at reports from standing, advisory, special, and adult committees of council.
Counselor Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a discussion with Dr. Paul on the, Sunday, on the phone, we are 80% COVID numbers of people who have been vaccinated, which is well ahead of Ottawa. The discussion also talked about 12-year-olds and to reopening schools safely to have more 12-year, 12-year-olds and/or older who will be in school next year to get to the vaccination centers and, and get vaccinated for safety for this year in the schools. The last comment that was about anti-vaxers, making appointments, then canceling those appointments, and the irony of this is that the bulk of COVID-19 patients who have died in this state, 200 last week, had not been vaccinated. So to the anti-vaxers, I'd like to say something that would not be nice, but at the end of the day, please do not book vaccinations when you're not going to show up. Leave the vaccination times for people who want the vaccines. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I have an announcement from the arts community. Last year, because of the COVID restrictions, obviously, we couldn't have any public celebrations for people who were inducted into the Arts Hall of Fame. We hope this year that we will be able to have a public celebration, and to that end, we have extended the deadline for nominations to September 1st. So the nomination form and all the protocols that go with it are on the website, the Cornwall and Area Arts Hall of Fame, and we hope to have another stellar set of inductees nominated. Thank you.
Just a point, does Emma put the, that information on our website?
I'll ask Emma to do that, for sure, yes. She will. Thanks.
Sorry, Emma, I forgot you were there. Any other reports? There are none, moving on.
We have no notices of motion, so moving on to confirming bylaw. Bylaw 2021 81, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the city of Cornwall at its meeting held this evening, July 12th, is being presented to council for adoption.
Motion? Counselor McDonald, Counselor Eber, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Motion to adjourn? Counselor McDonald, Counselor McIntosh, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you for a good meeting. It took it easy on me for the first one, so thank you. Oh, yeah, I've got a, he's my gavel, uh, person.